So.
That's the local county giving rather than the state.
All right, we'll make a beginning.
Father God, we pause and we thank you for all the blessings of life you shared with us. And we know the COVID is rapid to our community and our state and our country. We pray for healing where it be your will. We're mindful of those that protect us and first responders and those who wear a badge and uniform and please keep them safe and watch over them. So now we have county business before us and we pray for wisdom as we make decisions for our constituents, we ask it all in the name of Christ, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item of the business, welcome everyone. Is the minutes they were sent me email, we have Kevin on the phone, so he is nearby. So any alterations or corrections, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three zero, okay. Payroll for county year 2020, which is payroll 23, totals 238,101 dollars and 93 cents. 272 claims totaling 328,765 dollars and 31 cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Three zero, okay. Bid openings. Bid openings, do we have?
It's your turn.
I've been used to this.
Well, it's only been what, six months or whatever?
Something like that.
May.
May, since May?
May 21.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
At least it tells me the last bid was fifty, four fifty, and I got a bid for fifty five hundred.
All right.
Got to quit soon, it's going to be going for new, new price here.
Somebody's going to tap out eventually, I guess.
So fifty five hundred?
Yep. Fifty five hundred.
All right.
Just a few updates. As far as jail numbers first, we have 78 inmates in jails this morning. Twenty-one of those are pre-trial circuit, 20 are pre-trial superior, 11 DOC and 20 F6. So I think we were up in the upper eighties a week ago or so, so that's, we're getting down a little bit there and as well as some DOC. I know the DOCs are behind in intakes and dealing with COVID in their facilities. I know RDC was shut down as far as receiving new intakes. So we have obviously a handful that need to go down, so hopefully we can get them down soon, that'll help lower our numbers a little bit as far as that. So I know the, obviously the uptick in COVID that's been going around has been affecting everybody, it's affecting just work for force in general when it comes to stuff. It seems like every day that's gone by, I've gotten phone calls that, you know, my mom or my wife or my so-and-so had contact with so-and-so and it is, staffing is a chess match right now, and not only for us, but I think a lot of other people as well. So, so just a quick update as well, as far as the CARES Act money, since that was reimbursed to the county through the payroll for public safety. The council approved funding for projects that I had in place. A lot of those were implemented last week, one being UV lighting for disinfecting cells that those has actually showed up and we started using those last week, so that's been positive. So we've been getting that into place. The additional cameras that we were adding to the quarantine blocks is, was installed as of Friday, so that was a project that is completed and should be up and running this week to help us with that area. So those were two of the bigger things that we were doing, we're still currently working. I know IT along with Stylist is working on a, basically an overhaul of the video, video court. This will include both courts this time. Currently we're only with circuit, so Superior's coming on board. So that's a project that we will, I know that Judge Kirikoff got a grant, but it won't cover it all, so I'll probably be asking for additional appropriation out of that funding to cover the amount that's above what he got a grant for. So that's still in the works, they're dialing it in, it sounds like we're really close to coming up with a complete plan for that. So hopefully we'll see that, I'm sure looking, I think the last additional was already due, but we don't know a total amount on that, so it looks like we're going to be probably at the beginning of the year before that gets up and rolling. So Kevin, can you hear me?
Kevin, can you hear Scott?
Yeah, yeah, I've got you Scott.
I know Kevin and I had a meeting with Amoresco last week to kind of get an update on the project of the roof and the HVAC system for the jail. So we were looking at possibly asking them as well as the architecture firm Elevatus, who I had during the COVID stuff with the CARES Act money, we were looking at a possible remodel of our intake area. And those two companies kind of worked together, so I think Kevin and I, Kevin, am I correct? And we were looking at possibly having them come to give a presentation?
What we had talked about was maybe the first meeting in December, Scott?
Yep. Yeah, so we're looking at having a joint presentation done by Elevatus and Amoresco because they kind of work together because some of their stuff overlapped. So we, we really need to consider looking at, you know, if you remember just a quick history, Amoresco was solely looking at roof and HVAC and then COVID hit and that, you know, they did all their study stuff, but then dealing with what we're dealing with, with new intakes in the jail. And I've discussed this at previous meetings, we're not built to properly, you know, bring in intakes and quarantine people as far as size. So, so that's a daily struggle for us on how we do that. So I had a, you know, a CARES Act project working at, looking at a remodel there. So those two had to work together because they're looking at, you know, airflow and some other stuff as far as negative airflow cells and those type of things. So, so they kind of got to working together and yes, we need a new roof and yes, we need HVAC, but COVID stuff is we're dealing with on a daily basis. I mean, but I think they're both important projects. I think that what we wanted to do was have them pitch a presentation that would, would work on both projects at the same time if possible. So I don't want one to supersede the other, but we needed the COVID stuff and what we deal with there, you know, months ago. So, so that's what we're kind of looking at there. And you got anything else to add to that, Kevin?
No, I think you got it covered, Scott.
Okay, so, so hopefully we'll have more for that and it'll get put on the agenda for the next meeting. I think they're also going to present to the council as well, so on that first week in December.
Very good.
So outside of that, I don't have anything else.
You want to do this up now or at the end?
While he's here. I'll stick around. If you'll be joining.
Josh, up next.
Morning.
Good morning.
All right, a couple of things here. Due to the rain, we're going to grade roads this week, make sure, we did grade them a couple of weeks ago, but just not much, not much moisture, so you just kind of rolled gravel around, so today we're going to work on some rumble strips and get some things taken care of. Last few weeks, we started berman roads, haven't done that in, I'm told, six, eight years, so I don't know, doesn't matter. This year now, having two loaders, two graders, you know, two of everything that's really reliable. We've got two crews going, north and south, plus we've now have a broom. We've never berman paved roads before because we didn't have a way to clean up. Now we can, so we are going to berman some chip and seal roads that are in dire need of that as well this winter, or until it freezes and we can't peel the dirt up. So bermings going really well, getting a lot of roads done that needed, get the water off the road.
That's the key right there.
I mean, it's just, we've got soft spots that we're just constantly dumping stone in that this should help alleviate that. So doing berman and then number threes, we're just continuing to just chip away at winter. Are dropping salt spreaders, we had a couple break late last year, they're fixed up now. Trucks are just slowly, right now we're hauling dirt, we don't want to pull our pans out that auger out the salt, but eventually when that time comes, it's nothing but pulling pans out and switching over. Number four, my status. I have spoke to you two and Lisa and Roy, or spoke via email. This Friday, the 20th of November will be my last day with the highway department. I've accepted a position with another company. Wasn't an easy decision. Service in Wells County has been wonderful, this is where I was not technically born, but raised after about two years old. So it's been a pleasure to get to know people that I always thought I knew, but now I know them with a little more and things of that sort. It wasn't an easy decision for me because of the people I work for, the citizens of Wells County, I enjoy, I enjoy being able to take care of people. That's just kind of my, kind of how I am is to serve people. So in my staff, boy, everyone always warned me, oh, the highway guys are a rough group and yada, 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 but I tell you what, in any job I've had in my life, I've bonded more with that crew, I'm closer with that crew. I'll take friends out of the highway department that I'll have the rest of my life, that I have never had that experience in any other job that I've had. I'll take friends of like you guys, even commissioners, council members out of this job. It's affected me more personally, I went through a lot of personal challenges through my time at the highway and a lot of you folks have helped me through that as well as my staff. So it's just, this four-year term of my life has had a huge impact on me personally, my son even. So with that said, it was not easy, but I want to better myself. One of the flaws of the highway superintendent is there is no growth. You are what you are, you make what you make, there's no, there's nothing. It, if the council says, sorry, you don't get it, you don't get it. I don't like that, I'm driven by growth. I think anyone that's in this position, the county highway always gets the, always gets the reputation of just status quo, they just do what they have to do. Three years ago, I went to the council, I went to the commissioners, I've, not so much you, but went to the council, the council about a metrics pay. Give these guys a golden egg to strive for. You don't have turnover, sorry, that was their answer, the county council. So with that said, status quo is you get what you get. If the county council wants something more, they need to do something more. If they want something more out of a superintendent, they better do something more. That's been disheartening for me as a whole. Those guys work hard, there's a reason that a guy down there that's worked 40 years of his life should make more than a guy that just started six months ago. It's because he has real life experience. Who do you think I've leaned on the last four years so that I do get compliments from you folks? It wasn't me, I didn't just go to bed one night and wake up and was a good superintendent, it's those 20 guys down there. And to not do anything for them or take care of them with their pay schedule, it's absurd, it's really, I know everyone says, oh, you're from the outside, this is government, well it doesn't matter, life's life, rights, rights, wrong's wrong. So if there's any advice, you know, Scott came right in as the new sheriff, asked for it, got it. How do you think that helped down there? Do you think that they loved, the highway guys loved seeing that on the front page of the paper? No, especially knowing that I asked for it and got turned down. So I just hope some things changes behind scene with the county council. And while I'm on the county council, I know for four years, I've been kicking the same Diet Mountain Dew can down the road about a highway garage. I've got an employee down there that's been there 42 years that's kicked that same can and I won't even use Diet Mountain Dew because they didn't make it back then. Still nothing. And the one person that really put his neck out got voted out. So what's that mean for 2021, 2022, 2023? Is the same can going to get kicked down? You know, I sat here and listened to Scott and that's great for him, he's getting a new roof, we've needed a new roof. I'm pretty sure Scott's employees don't stand in two inches of water every time it rains or when trucks melt off. It's, there's double standards, you know? There's a pretty picture on the Buffalo of the count, the annex building and all these county-owned facilities on the Buffalo at the street, at the courthouse plaza, they didn't put one of the highway garage, did they? I'm pretty sure I know why, you know? There are pictures of it at a historic museum when it was a train station. So it's, these are things that I had to dig deep in making my decision, you know? There's just no progression. It's, the highway department gets yelled at when the snow isn't pushed and the roads aren't right and there's a limb in the tree, it's, we're the fall guys, but no one's ever done anything for them, they're just hidden, they're just, oh, those are the guys, you know? I have the biggest budget in all of the county, I have the biggest clump of assets in all of the county, sitting in a barn that can go up and smoke any day. That's discredited. I think the past president, Mr. Monan Smith quoted, we're never going to grow any bigger. Well, we're supposed to convert more roads, we're supposed to do more things, but we're not going to grow any bigger. That doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that that comment makes zero sense. And I'm not here to throw stones, I'm just saying, if you want Wells County better than it was from a highway department, you got to take care of your people and you got to get them a facility that's actually worthy. You know, every one of our council members have been through there and I bet every one of them, shop at home, garage at home, house at home, doesn't look that way. But it's okay for those 20 employees. So morale's morale, that's, you get what you get. And when I was hired, I was, hey, let's try to get this highway department up off the ground, let's try to get them in better spirits. It didn't take me long to figure out, how am I supposed to do that? When they've heard the same story for 40-some years and nothing has changed. So I'm taking this opportunity to kind of get on my soapbox because for four years, I didn't want the limelight, I didn't want, hey, your job's terminated because you spoke your mind, but now, for a lack of a better way of saying it, doesn't matter. So I'm taking this opportunity and I'm speaking to you guys because that's where this desk is put, but I know you two and the one on the phone mimic everything I just said. Maybe not everything, but 90% of it. So I'm not targeting that at you, I'm not targeting it at Chuck because Chuck is probably one of the ones that is on our side, but there's a whole nother host of county council members that for some reason, you know, Steve Huggins, great guy, but I'm pretty sure when he owned Pretzels, his facility didn't look that way. But it's okay for us, things of that sort. So I'm done with that, but we got to do something for those people, you know, you need to do something with that facility. And if you don't, you get what you get. And I mean, you can't squeeze blood out of a turnip, you know? So I've talked to you guys all about my hiring recommendations. Winter months are status quo, keep guys busy, I mean, I just in public want to say I would wait till the first of the year, tons of guys are on vacation right now through the end of the year. It's, it would be tricky to bring a superintendent in when half the crew's hot there because they're on and off and, you know, it'd be good first of the year to bring someone in, February, you know, bring someone in and, you know, try to get them acclimated with the crew as a whole instead of half here, half there, you know? But that's just my, I've talked to Lindsay, Lindsay has all my contacts, so as far as that goes, if you do take my recommendation, Lindsay and Travis and Kim can more than handle the situation down there. I've talked to Kevin via email on some equipment that I've specced, you know, I, you know as well as I, the big problem when I came in was our equipment was outdated, so I've literally set out a schedule over the last five years to how to get our equipment up to stuff. So I've talked to Kevin about kind of what my mind and where my mind was on equipment and no lack of, not talking to you, but him being the truck guy and the equipment guy, I went to him because he's, he knows equipment. So it wasn't that I, you know, I wasn't trying to step on toes with you guys. And I think that's about all I have for my notes and then some. I kind of went on my tangent, but it needs to happen, I think we all agree.
Josh, we appreciate you saying that.
Yeah, it's a disgrace, it really is.
And we've loved working with you and we're going to miss you terribly.
Yeah.
And we're very proud of the work you've done and the progress you've made in spite of the obstacles.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I, like I said, it's been a pleasure, I've loved every second of it. Even the day I had to put my waders on to go down there and talk to the guys, I still put them on and good group of commissioners, great group of commissioners.
Thanks for 20, 30 minutes on the phone, yes, last week.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, everyone up at the courthouse, I mean, I love going to see Lisa and Lisa and all them and the auditor, I mean, it's, this wasn't easy. Like I said, I've bonded with people more in this job than I have in any other job and I'm going to miss it, I really am. But I think I've got it going in the right direction.
We wish you luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Hey Josh, I would concur with Kami's comments and I would like to also thank you again for all your insight as you related to the equipment and getting things online and up to, up to speed. Thank you very much and good luck in the future.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Nate, we'll turn it over to you.
Appreciate it. Let's see here, I've got quite a few different things. I had sent out a big email last week in advance of the meeting. First item just is a little update on the bridge 304, the light bridge. Work is coming along on that project pretty well, I think we're staying on schedule at this point. Planning on doing some asphalt paving this week, there's some patchwork that needs to be done, so hopefully we'll see some asphalt. So it will look like the bridge is done probably the end of this week, but it's not quite, we're still going to try to get striping probably just the Tuesday or Wednesday before Thanksgiving and then we'll be officially open. The goal right now is to have that done and open before Thanksgiving, so there'll be a plus or minus a couple of days here or there, but certainly by Thanksgiving, we should be out of the way for that project. We do have on the asphalt shoulder north of the bridge, north of the trails, access to the Wobachy State Park, that the paving crew that accessed that actually damaged pretty heavily the shoulder.
Yeah.
It wasn't part of the Primco project, it was part of the NDOT project that did that trail. So I've actually contacted the paving contractor, we're going to start that process. I don't know if I'm going to be able to get that patched concurrently with our project, it may be something we're going to have to do later on. The goal is that it doesn't cost the county any money to have that repaired done, so.
I hate to see it get done when we know that the drive lanes need to be redone in the worst of ways. So if we could do a reclamation or something.
Try to do some work.
Side of the bridge that we just are doing to the Elm Grove, 201, get that done, make it.
Well, in light of the earlier announcement, we'll have to look at schedules, budgets and see what we can try to work in. So certainly I think if we want to try to go from Elm Grove Road south to where this project ended, I think like a mill and overlay project, maybe we could bring the patch up and then try to come back in and touch that up, that could be something that we do. So.
EMB and Brooks both quoted that when we did Elm Grove Road.
Okay.
But remember, we have discussed the wait to see what happened with the bridge and possibly raising it and so on and so forth. So Nate, if you contact Eric at, at Brooks or Jared at EMB, both of those have those numbers from when we did Elm Grove, because I had planned, because we did the south side, we were going to do all of it out there, but then we waited due to the bridge.
Right.
Yeah.
They do have those numbers.
We got those numbers, so we'll have to talk to them.
And there is money in hot mix for next year for that.
Yeah, perfect. So we'll be, we'll be ready to do that, I just need to get the base patched, I mean, essentially the base, it's a base failure at this point that I need to try to address and then we can, we can work on hot mix projects for 2021. That would probably be a better fit for that than to try to squeeze it in this late in the year.
Right.
I don't think I'm going to be able to get any of that done within that schedule.
Yeah.
Moving on to item two, the, our NOFA application, I know I talked about that a little bit, you should have in your packet, three different letters of financial commitment. We had talked before about the county road 200 South, the sections from Adams Street to Hoosier Highway, Clark Street, and then from Clark Street, Hoosier Highway over to State Road One is two parts, that has already been signed off on as part of the interlocal agreement between the county, the city and the redevelopment commission, so I'm moving forward with that application. The remaining three are county bridge 170, 19 and 71, I have those up really for consideration. My concern with those though is that the, individually, kind of how those will all kind of fall at the same time. will all kind of fall at the same time. I don't think if we, let's say for example, if we got all of them, we'd be definitely stretching the Q bridge fund to its maximum. There's certainly the potential that the, because it's a reimbursement account, you're going to pay a hundred percent out, but then you're expecting eighty percent back through federal aid. If you, you do that, there's a possibility that you're going to overrun those accounts until you get the reimbursements back, if you were to get everything. Now, I don't think it's likely that we would get all of them, but I want to at least make you aware before we said absolutely, let's go forward, that we have essentially a hundred percent of the cash on hand for those. Um, you'll see, we've already got Bridge 54, 105 and 51 last year through the same process. Um, with two, two major road project sections on 200 South, um, that being a different fund, Q bridge would be the obvious location for these three. Um, timing wise, I think they're all eligible for this, they were reasonable projects for it. I just, I'm, I'm a little concerned with where that fund is and it's just not going to be robust enough to support six.
Well, the only way is to do it is to increase that percentage.
Yes.
In the tax base to make that increase.
So.
Um, I would almost be in favor of sticking with the two, top ones on the 200 South, the Adams Street and the Hoosier side of it and come in next year and see where we are. And I, I hate, hate to make a commitment that paints us in a corner that, that it's going to be our only option is to raise that Q bridge.
Yeah, because it would, if you were to be awarded, it really would be, you'd be forcing your hand to then raise that fund.
Is there enough room to add just one of the lower cost without pinching us?
Oh, if, if you were going to pick one of the three that you've got, 170, 19 or 71.
I mean, if you're going to pick one.
The seven, the 71 is on a, if I'm not mistaken, extremely low travel?
Yes, very low traveled gravel road. It's a, it's a fairly expensive project, um, in its current condition. Um, part of our dilemma is that we don't have really good plans of that bridge. Um, rehabilitation was essentially was the original proposal, but during the investigation, there's no bridge plans for the pilings. So we can't really make a determination that rehabilitation can even be done without essentially starting over.
So that might be better to wait anyway.
So it's, it's going to be a very expensive project when we get into it. Um, it, we're not at the point where we're limiting the loads on that bridge significantly or closing the outside lanes. Uh, it may be a stopgap that we can do. Again, you're looking at money for construction in 2026. I mean, it, it really becomes a bit of a gamble as far as what's going to be needed most.
Well, 170 and 19 should be done back to back, side to side, in conjunction, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, because the 170 is the one based on condition that needs it first. Um, problem is, is 19 is a, is a trash rack. Essentially, it, it creates a debris problem. It's been a complaint from the property owners adjacent to it for years. Um, so really I need to address both of them together.
Where would that, those two come in on community crossing dollars?
They would be favorable for community crossings, um, so.
I mean, are we into that timeframe already on that?
Um, I have, it would, as far as the current schedule, I could look at those for community crossings in 2022. I essentially have projects designed already. Um, if you'd like, I could put those into queue for design. Once I know kind of where I'm at the end of this year, I was looking at signing design contracts, depending on what we're awarded. If we're awarded this second call this year and I get the project, the Bridge 99, at the start of next year, then these would be ideal candidates for 2022 even. I could throw those in at that point.
Or 23, if.
Or 23.
If necessary.
And the convenience of community crossings is if we did those in 23, finishing them up the spring of 24, it's still two and a half years ahead of when federal aid would finance these. So that, from the public perspective, it's faster using community crossings. It's just a commitment, I've just got to put the queue in. Really for us, these are just, it, they seem so slow because you're essentially throwing a, they're always hail mary passes, you're throwing it and it's five years before it lands. It's just, that's the, the process you got to go through. So, but I got my crystal ball out and I, I don't know that we want to try to go for, have six of these all running at the same time, that's a lot of projects.
Exactly.
From a, from a fund that we just recently started.
You're a one man man, okay? It's just like you don't have.
Yeah. So I, I want to warn it, warn you of it. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to turn money down, um, if there's a possibility to try to get these. I just, I don't want to over commit ourselves. We've been very, very successful with these projects. Um, certainly it's, it's the, it's the situation. We just, we, we, we have to have money to, to spend money and go for these grants and so it's a commitment we try to make. We're trying to leverage everything we can as the county and try to be responsible as a county moving forward. Um, it's just, there's, my, I'm just somewhat concerned. And once we get another year or so in, and we've got a couple more years of receipts from the Q and Bridge Fund, um, maybe a small uptick of it wouldn't be unreasonable, but I don't want to, I don't want to make tax policy based on a, on a, an application like this at this point, so.
What's, what's the 301 fund? The 301?
Oh, the State Road 301 relinquishment.
We've got that.
That should be, you've got two of the three payments in it.
Yeah, I've got two million, I'll get another one next year.
Yeah, but nothing's been spent out of that.
Oh, no.
That has not been. I think that right now. We still have local tracks, that's a commitment of over a million dollars that we'll need to cover. And that can come from lit potentially, but I think it was earmarked as that, was local tracks would be paying for the 301 relinquishment would be covering that. Um, at least the lion's share of it. The other project that you have for the 301 that's kind of earmarked right now is the County Home Road, uh, 450 East, that curve correction federal aid project. That could be lit highway or 301 funds, depending on when those actually start, when we get to the construction, those are all 2023, again.
These, these three bridge projects are federal aid and so you're saying the Q bridge fund would, would be the obvious. For the county's contribution, which is twenty?
Which is twenty percent.
Twenty percent?
And on paper, uh, we can cover it. The dilemma is, is that they're reimbursement accounts. So you're going to pay a hundred percent of every invoice and then get eighty percent of that money back reimbursed. So depending on how those fall and when the reimbursements come back, you may be, you may not have enough money in the account during the first draw if there's two or three big expenses during construction.
Like the, uh, the RSD, the county's own money to RSD.
Correct. So the, I mean, it would be a situation where if the county general fund wanted to subsidize it to kind of bolster that, I mean, it, it's something that we can do. I mean, it's a possibility if that, if you want to use the general fund as kind of a backstop for, for these projects until the Q bridge fund were reimbursed, if that were a potential. Um, uh, but.
You only need it if you get the projects awarded.
Correct. I mean, if, well, I can apply for all these and we'll get, we'll get turned down. I, I think it's still, it's still somewhat of a long shot that you'll get. I mean, we're still pushing obviously for 200 South, that's obviously the priority project at that timeframe because of what it, what it does for the area, the city and the redevelopment commission want to see that. Um, these all become just part of it. And it may just be an issue where you say, for example, if you wanted to do, if you just wanted to throw 71 in as that, how project, it's, it's going to need federal aid. I mean, it's not, it's not going to be a project that could be done.
I would say 71 should be the federal aid.
And save the other two.
Community crossings.
Do those, those community crossings, so.
Whether you want to do 71 now or spring of 2021, apply for 26, 27.
Yeah, you'd be pushing that one out to 2027. So, I mean, if, if, if that were a possibility where we could essentially try to cover that, if I took 71 and 19 out, try to do those locally for design for community crossings, um, then we just target 71, um, that's going to certainly, that's going to bolster. I mean, there'll be, that, the lowest month that you would have, or the lowest year in your balance would be a half, quarter of a million, you'd be putting in another quarter of a million so your balance would never be below half a million dollars as far as the projection goes. So, I mean, that would not be in, that wouldn't be a bad choice, so.
Does that make sense?
I, I really think so. 170 and 19 do as, community crossings and 71 is a federal aid project and, and just move forward with the spring application of 2021 on federal aid, so.
Yeah, well, actually it's going to be, that, that federal aid application is currently open, that'll close here, the, like the second, end of the second week in December.
December, and that's going to be for the 200 South, both projects.
We'll do the 200 South. So are you, do you want me to apply for 71 as the third project in this current federal aid call? Because if you do, then I would, I would request, um, your letter of financial commitment for that.
We're, we're safe to do it. We don't want to let up because if we let up, then we don't want to get overlooked next time.
I would say dollar amount, you, you think we're going to be way adequate?
I think you're going to be, now, yeah.
Do you want to run the numbers and?
Oh, no, I mean, I, I mean, I, I've got the numbers here. You're essentially, out of our ask, you're adding about $300,000 of local match that would come out of 170 and 19, back into the Q bridge fund. So you'd be well over half a million dollars in that balance estimated. And you still have, you've got a couple other buckets you can draw from, potentially, whether it's some lit for some of these intermediate costs. Because essentially the, the writing of the letter says you're going to use lit and Q bridge funds, so.
But that's the one, you said you don't have a good design on yet, so.
Right.
Is that going to slow you down or should we wait?
No, this would be, this is why we have quite a bit of cost in this project. That's why that project is, yeah. It assumes a lot of unknowns, um, because of kind of the lack of, of an old plan set. So that's why that project is, total project cost from preliminary engineering through construction inspection is at two and a quarter million dollars.
Yeah.
So, and for a low traveled road, that's a really big liability, that's why federal aid is so helpful. That means our commitment to local funds is sitting at about $450,000, even with the fairly, I mean, that's with inflation added into it over six years. That's a big expense for a low traveled road.
Right.
So, and, and it's still 2026, so.
I would be okay. If we pick the other two out, put that one in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing it.
So, want to go forward with, with the Bridge 71, which is the larger, largest of the three, but taking the two smaller ones out, which gives us more of a buffer?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So I'd make that motion?
Good. Motion, do I have a second?
Uh, second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Two, zero.
Okay, all right. I will prepare the applications as you have them here. So one, two, and then this will be three. Okay, thank you. Um, Bridge 403, which is actually Jackson 260, it's a small structure. Uh, it's on 800 South over the Davis Drain. I have attached a copy of a structure size and type analysis that USI has done for us. It's been set up that that, that small structure really needs to be a bridge. It's a slab top on a, on a spread footer. Um, one of the options, we've been looking at different options as far as like an aluminum boxes or maybe a concrete box that we could do with a concrete arch. Based on their preliminary hydraulics, they're, they're recommending one of two options, whether it's a, USI is, a precast concrete structure, which really would have like a 28-foot span as far as width, a clear roadway. We're, we're considering whether it's this concrete arch, which has quite a bit more impact on the area, or if we want to try to do like a timber deck on pilings. That way we have a slightly smaller impact, but we will have guardrails on it. There's a picture of a similar system shown here below, that what that might look like if we were to go that route. It is, again, it's in Jackson Township, it's not a heavily traveled road, but it, and certainly this, this small structure needs to be improved. And before I say, let's go with a timber with an asphalt overlay over this, I want to at least kind of bring this up to you, let you kind of say, is this something that we want to have more of or less? We have a number of timber bridges in the county, I think three in different locations. This would potentially be the fourth, if that's the direction we wanted to go. If we don't go with the timber, we'll have to make this bridge quite a bit wider and be, to get the clear zone because we were trying to eliminate the guardrail in that.
So lifespan of the timber versus the?
It's the pros and cons list, let's see here. Um, the precast concrete has, has less risk for maintenance. Uh, there's no obstructions within the road zone because there's no guardrail system. There is a higher pavement cost because we're going to have to essentially do quite a bit more pavement removal and replacement. Um, and there's quite a bit more grading and, and environmental impact because we're going to have to do quite a bit larger area to place this and there's woods nearby this structure. If we go with the timber, it's, I mean, one of the key points they list here, first one's not key, is that it's, I mean, it's, it's a prettier system. I mean, it's definitely for a small road, it definitely feels like something that would fit into the environment there. It has less impact on the stream and the trees nearby, the neighbors, uh, less backfill, so we're going to have less pavement impacts and backfill for that. Uh, smallest area, probably the minimal grading impacts for us for the bridge. It's going to look much closer to what's kind of out there today, though it's got a concrete guardrail on it. It'll go to a timber guardrail, it'll be slightly wider. There is risk of some maintenance as far as tightening the bolts on those bridges. So it'd be something you'd put on like a five-year rotation to do kind of inspection and make sure that everything essentially is staying where it's supposed to. But we have those in our system right now. Um, USI has kind of recommended that we kind of look at the two different alternatives and I wanted to bring that up to you.
I'd like to go out and look at it.
What's the front cost difference?
Um, they are, the front costs are within about $5,500 of each other. So really at this, at this level, they're, they're definitely within the margin of error at this point. So they're really not, I'm going to save some money on some stone, um, with this option versus the other. Um, so at that point, really, there's really, I can't tell that there's going to be much of a difference, so.
And where are the neighbors in relation to the particular?
We have one house that's on the northwest corner, they're going to be over 300 feet away from it, but they're, they're going to have somebody at least somewhat close to this.
This is west of State Road Five or whatever the road.
State Road Three, yes, I believe it is. So, but it is on the existing Chip Seal Road.
Right.
And this one was, this structure actually got hit by somebody not too long ago. I think they jumped a trailer over this October.
This isn't a new bridge that we put in, just not too long ago, is it?
No, no.
I was thinking, there was a, we chained a culvert out to a bridge or something.
That was, yeah.
We've done that. The, the ones that we've done since I've been here use the 400 designation. So we have 400 and 401. There are two that USI are designing right now, which are 402 and this is 403. They'll both be bridges, they're like 19.
Two, that's probably the one I'm thinking of.
Yeah, so that's another one, that's in Rock, uh, Rock Creek Township. So that's another one, that's a small structure, 800 I believe it is, is the number for that one. So USI is designing both of them. This is the first one that we've got the survey done for and so that's why they're considering it. This is a possible. Um, I'm, anytime in the next month or two. This was one we're considering for community crossings funds for next year. Um, it all depends on if we're awarded this, um, Bridge 121. Yes?
Um, just to offer up a little suggestion on this, I think where that's located, like you said, honestly, more and more counties are going with the timber bridge. I know Huntington uses them and Allen County uses them.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I'm thinking it might be an opportunity to maybe, you know, again, add another one to our inventory initially, um, like you said, maybe the first five years, you might have to do a little tightening, but after that, they're, they're rather self-sufficient from what I understand talking with them.
Yeah. The photo that you have there is actually from a timber bridge, that, almost identical to what we would be doing here from Huntington, is what I understand. So this is an installation there in Huntington. I could get you the actual location if you'd like.
So is this timber, is this like a painted or linseed oil or?
Yeah, it's, um, copper naphtha, I believe, that they impregnate into those before they assemble it. So those would be treated before they assemble it and they come as assembled pant, panels. It's a simple, it's a kit system that'll go on a pile-driven foundation. We'd pour the caps on it, they'd assemble it on top of the, uh, piling system. Nice part for the timber is it can be assembled in the winter. The only dilemma for us is that this is actually already a chip seal road, so we have to wait for asphalt to surface it, so we could time it. But similar to a couple systems, it's, uh, it's good. So we could time it, but similar to a couple systems, it's, uh, it's good late winter, early spring work for us to try to get it opened in March. We've tried to do that with a number of our bridges, that when it's not farm season, get that, get that up and ready to go. And then when they're ready to get out in the fields and start planting, the bridge or road can be opened up again, so... Just something for consideration, it's a little change from what we've done in the past, but it's not, it's not alien to Wells County. We've done timber, timber bridges in the past, and so far, I, I haven't really had issues with them, as long as you can get the, uh, the spans appropriate. Thankfully, this is a very small bridge, so this would be kind of ideal. I'm not trying to do a five-span or four-span timber bridge. We've got some with a lot of obstructions in the waterway that I wouldn't prefer. Um, this is not a bad solution for bridges with a 20 to 28-foot span, which is, this one falls in at a 26-foot span length, so...
All right. We'll, we'll review for the next meeting, so...
Yep, I'll just leave it on my notes for us. We can, if, whenever you've got some, if you're curious and like to go out and look at one, certainly I'd be more than happy to schedule a, a visit out to look at one of these locations.
Okay.
All right? All right.
Thanks.
I have a utility permit for the RSD will be on its way. I hope to have those for you for review. Uh, I don't yet. Ryan Lefet will be getting those to me. The regional sewer district project should be going out for bid in early December, so they're trying to get all their permits together during the bidding phase. That project would not be constructing anything this winter. Uh, their goal would be trying to close on their bonding in the end of March, first week of, actually, it'd be the end of March, and then they would try to start construction sometime after that, so April, May of 2021. So there's plenty of time to get that paperwork. I just don't have that for you here today, but I wanted to give you a little update before, before you see it in the newspaper that they're requesting bids, so...
And this application for utilities is from...
That's from MediaCom. They've got 2835 East, 350 North, uh, so that one, I'm just, I'm recommending approval on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I have just a standard statement of any right-of-way dedications that we might have. I'm not sure I did not. There's two new right-of-way dedications, recommending approval on those.
Motion to approve right-of-way.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Okay. All right. With that, thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
You have a very good day.
You too.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck with your...
Okay. Option, we want to discuss that and engagement...
This is just left over from before. I don't know that, is there anything new on the status of the option?
Not what I'm aware of.
Other than the engagement letter?
Right.
Okay, so the, the next thing on, on the list is engagement letter. Uh, I've been in discussion with attorneys at Barnes and Thornburg for probably the last two years now, from time to time, on things having to do with highway garage project. Uh, where we are on the option purchase real estate, uh, real estate we're looking at considers a possible trade of the present county highway garage site, and in that regard, an environmental assessment has been done. Uh, it's quite lengthy, and again, it involves environmental issues. And, uh, the Barnes and Thornburg Law Firm said, you know, we've talked with you on a no, a number of occasions on this project, and probably time to get an engagement letter. So they have sent an engagement letter, which just says the county may from time to time ask them for services relative to various aspects of the county highway garage, site selection, financing a new con, a new building, but in this case would be specifically to review environmental studies that have been done. And it's an hourly basis, their hourly rates depends on which attorney is being assigned the, uh, task. I don't see it as a commitment to the county other than to pay them for their services as requested by the county. And I forwarded the engagement letter to the commissioners and would ask that that engagement letter be signed, so we can proceed, uh, along that, to at least have the environmental study reviewed, uh, get an opinion from them as to what was done, what they think the county should consider being done. And the consideration is, regardless of whether or not the present site is exchanged in connection with buying land for a new building, we still have, uh, disposal of the present highway garage site to consider. And I know, uh, council, when we've had a joint session in the past, and I think Chuck in particular has said, you know, a number of council have said, you know, we need to be concerned about how we responsibly deal with the disposition of the present, uh, highway garage site. So this is part of that. Regardless of whether it's traded or not, uh, I think, you know, someone's going to have a, a study done. It's probably, uh, sense for us to read it and see what it, see what they think it says and whether or not it covers everything, or if there's something they didn't cover or something else the county ought to do.
Okay, so motion to approve that signature of the letter.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. All right. So Lisa, other business?
Um, first thing up is the salary contract for the sheriff.
Oh. You've seen this? Any discussion, any thing, Roy, in regards to this? We're in agreement?
I mean, I...
You wrote it.
Put in a number, I, I drafted it. I sent you a memo regarding the statutes. The statute with respect to the sheriff's salary contract, you can either negotiate a contract in which you've fixed an amount, which would be the compensation, or plan B is you rely on the statute, which is, for a county of our size, I believe, is 60% of the rate set for prosecutors and judges, plus, uh, whatever the sheriff, uh, fees would be in collection of income tax warrants, which, who knows? I mean, we've had, from, from what Lisa's provided with me, or provided me with, the last five years, there's a wide range, so...
So taking the last three years average and doing the formula, we came up with the number that we are going to write into a contract to keep it more simple, which ends up being...
Yeah, I, I, I looked at the data and sent you an email, and, and then, uh, a suggestion was made, well, how about, let's, let's do this amount, and so...
So it's an amount comparable to surrounding counties, and I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve that as the contract today.
I'll second that.
Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. Thank you.
Uh, the, this contract would require approval, obviously, by the sheriff and also by county council. So there is some onus upon us to get this done in time to present it to county council that meets one more time this year.
We'll have a prior December meeting, so...
Do you want to talk about certificate sales since Kathy's here first? Do you want to discuss that any further? Were there any questions for Kathy?
Uh, certificate sales, um, at the last meeting I said, um, I think the majority of the properties that did not sell at the tax sale, didn't sell because of the amount of city unsafe building demolition costs, which they're required to add to the unpaid taxes, and that's the required bid. Nobody's going to bid for that. So the only way, uh, of getting it out of the present status and into production, in, in my opinion, would be for the county to act, and the properties that don't sell, uh, the county commissioners can get a tax sale certificate that isn't owning it. Then you'd have to do like anybody else on a tax sale certificate. You'd have to get a title search, you'd have to bring an action to get a tax deed. Uh, I don't know whether the commissioners want to invest that kind of money, uh, to get title. Uh, my thought was, since the majority of these properties are not sellable because of money owed the city, uh, the city might be approached or at least talked to to see if the city had any interest in doing that. I mean, if the county wants to, fine, but for a tax sale, uh, we'd have to set a price. It's been a while since I looked at it, but I think the commissioners may have some options to transfer the tax sale certificates to the city, uh, as opposed to having a sale. I mean, like, and I think you can perhaps, uh, transfer the tax sale certificates to nonprofits, or I think there's one, you know, you can go to maybe an adjoining property owner, uh, and there was an adjoining property owner who was interested in a property at tax sale, but didn't qualify because he didn't live in that adjoining property, it was a rental. So, uh, I asked, uh, Tony Crowell, and he said he'd get in touch with the mayor, uh, to see if, if the city was interested, but I made no commitment that the county would transfer it to the city, that's just one consideration.
I guess when it's all said and done, they haven't paid the taxes and everything, so how much over and above is the county going to have to pay just to get rid of it?
Well, the only, the only thing the county would have to pay to get rid of it is depending on whether or not you're...
Title search, and then...
Well, you wouldn't have to have a title search if you're just going to have a tax sale certificate sale.
Right.
That's what you're offering. We're not offering deeds to the property. We're just saying, here's the tax sale certificate, sell it to the highest bidder, and then there's, they have, you know, to, to, it's, it's like giving them an egg. They got the egg, they've got to lay it, and they've got to hatch it, and do the title search and bring a quiet title action. Now, if, if the county wants to spend that kind of money on these eight or 10 properties to, to do that, that's fine, but...
And this seems like the most feasible option. I think the one question we had was, there was one property that was adjacent to somebody's that they owned that we wanted to maybe save that out and try to do all the other county ones, or all the other city ones to the city if they'll accept it.
Yeah, I mean, I just thought, maybe you would want to know if the city's interested before you made a decision.
And I think that's only proof. I think for you to find out if the city is willing, I guess, with that way.
If they're willing not, would suit us.
If you remember, when SRI was here, they said, easiest thing for you to do is, is, is sell the certificates. I mean, that, that's simple. All you got to do is set a price, and they'll handle that, and we'll pay them, I don't know, was it 10% or something?
10% if they are here, 15 if it's virtual.
Okay.
Yeah, let's find out what, if Tony and John are willing to come back and...
Right, okay.
That's vice versa. 15 if it's here, 10 if it's online.
Yeah.
Um, we have a Peta Bowa board application to fill the one that was vacated by Marty Adam, um, and...
And that was, I mean...
That was Beth Singleton.
Yes. I would, I would recommend that we do.
Since it's our one and only application. If there's no conflict, then I would make that recommendation as a motion.
Motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
And then health renewal. PHP, I had a meeting with them, and they, she had a renewal. They aren't going to increase any premium, um, it's going to stay flat. And we have a 35% give back if our premiums aren't over what we've paid, if our claims aren't over what we paid in premium, they will reimburse 35%, and next year they'll do 40%. Um, right now, we have 97.5% of our claims are, you know, with our premium, so we would get, right now, $2,740 back. So if claims don't increase, you know, so it's not going to be a large amount, but right now, we're a little below. United Healthcare, Anthem, and Cigna declined to submit a proposal because we have a really good premium right now. Motion to approve for next year.
Motion, second?
Kevin?
Second, second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Did you want to do anything about a telecommute policy as far as working from home, tracking hours? A lot of people are getting laptops, like my office has three laptops. A lot of counties have policies that, um, just spell out what is expected of the employees working from home.
Probably a good idea.
Is there software that goes on it or just...
Yes.
Logging, logging stuff physically on a paper?
Right, I have LogMeIn on my computer so I can get to my desktop from home and do anything I could do sitting at my computer, um, from my desktop, and I have...
Something IT can, or has done?
Yeah. So I think I emailed you a, a policy from another county, um, you know, Roy can look at that and alter it anyway.
Roy, look at it and see if we'll put that together for our December meeting.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Jessica Onies? Hearing nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Tab.